I'm gonna stand, pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just don't fall asleep out there.
Alright, we have a recall.
Here.
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 Here. Here. We have a public hearing on our budget. So notice this hereby was official reading. While being present, the first order of business to hold a public hearing on the budget prepared in tentative form as set forth in the minutes of the meeting of the Board of Education held on July 10, 2018. The Secretary of the Board of Education has submitted an affidavit and a certificate of publication from the Landmark stating that a tentative budget for District 208 for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2018 and ending June 30, 2019 was placed on file and was conveniently available at the district's administrative offices. Notice was given that a public hearing on said tentative budget will be held at 7:00 PM on September 11, 2018. Do notice has been given of the public hearing on budget and all other statutory requirements preliminary to the holding of such public hearing has been complied with. Dr. Skinkis and Mr. Beranek will present and explain the 2018-2019 budget and answer any questions from the Board.
The Board of Education has a one-page handout in front of them. The changes that I put in the, that were in the action sheet of the packet. There wasn't enough changes to go through and do blue highlights and to have a detailed presentation, so I asked Mr. Beranek to complete just a one-page summary. But more or less, when we left you in August, we did that thorough analysis. We did increase our interest on investments from the Township Treasurer's Office. We spoke with them, Scott spoke with them twice after the August meeting and then again just last week. So the results are an increase. We're gonna increase the budget from FY18 to 19. The only expenditure assumptions that are changing is the special ed out-of-district tuition. We have a few more transfer students come in, some of them were outplace students, so we needed to increase our tuition. And then we are doing some minor repairs to the staff, male and female staff locker rooms. I need to do some plumbing issues and floor issues to improve some of the drainage. So I increased the operations and maintenance budget by 10,000. If you look at Scott's summary, there was no impact on the budget as the additional revenue offset the additional expenditures. The projected deficit for the budget we're asking the Board to approve tonight is $231,372, and there is no change, which is no change from the detailed presentation we provided in August.
Alright, any Board members have questions? I'll look to my left.
I just have one question, and I don't know if Kevin, you or Kristen should answer, but how confident are we now that we won't have any more transfer students who would maybe require additional out-of, you know, tuition?
There's certainly always a possibility of that, but our transfers have slowed down. We feel like we've gotten the last big wave after Labor Day.
And we had a .1 of unused staff, and we have a .2 of biology posted to see if we can fill that to try to increase the biology staffing. So we may have to do an additional .1. But other than that, we feel our staffing and our class sizes, between Beth's work, Kristen's work, Kylie's work is solid.
Anyone else on my left? My right?
So how many does that take us to the outplaced? Special ed?
Just over 20, roughly. Just curious.
No, that's it.
Alright, the meeting now will be open for public discussion. Any persons signed to be heard will be heard at this time. There are no visitors out there. I will not read the detailed requirements of this conference. Seeing that no further comments from the public, I now declare the public hearing on the budget completed, and the regular meeting will now proceed. Alright. Go down to discussion and information items, is that correct?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And...
FOIA request was the first.
We had one FOIA request. The response is in there. We had, I asked the attorneys to look as well as we looked, and we had no records that matched their request.
Happy to hear that.
So that was the only request on the FOIA.
Alright, district goals report.
Kristen?
So tonight, we have three staff members here to report out on four district goals. So first, I'll invite our Director of Student Services up, Ms. Beth Augustine, and she'll report out on the graduation and matriculation data from the class of 2017-18.
Alright, good evening. So I will start with graduation rate. For the class of 2018, I had predicted a graduation rate of 95.8. I was slightly off on my prediction, 1.5. Unfortunately, we had three students during the 2017-18 school year drop. I've listed the seven students that dropped. Two of them were transfer students, three of the seven were special education students, and two of those seven students entered a GED program. I can say that there was a lot of effort and energy that went into trying to keep those students at RB, efforts of counselors, social workers, deans, to try to keep them in high school. And unfortunately, losing a few of them was not from lack of effort. But I would point out that over the last 10 years, we've ranged from eight to 13 students dropping, and so this year, losing seven means that I think we're doing a good job. We're trying to keep as many in the building as we possibly can. We had seven students that did not graduate in May, but were able to attend summer school and earn their diploma, so those students counted in our graduation rate. And we had 15 students retained for the 2018-19 school year. All 15 of those students were special education students. One of them receiving a certificate of attendance, meaning that they were not working towards a diploma. 13 of them met their graduation requirements, but opted to stay on for transition services. They have that right to stay on until the day before their 22nd birthday. And then we had one student who was credit deficient, who was unable to finish during summer school. But the good news is, the student completed his graduation requirements and has already earned his diploma. So that 94.3% has already jumped up a little bit after the student graduated. So in looking at the adjusting the graduation rate, taking into consideration the student that are in the COA and the 13 students that stayed on for transition, and this is answering Mr. Walsh's question, the state does not take into consideration those students staying on for transition as graduates. So that's why they are counting against us in graduation rate. So if you look at, add in the 14 students, COA, and the 13 that stayed on for transition, our graduation rate is really 97.8, which I think is pretty spectacular, a pretty strong graduation rate. And then that will get adjusted as some of those transition students either take their diploma or age out at 22. And then if you look for the adjusted graduation rate for the class of 2017, I had predicted 95.5, when actually it was 97. So all of our students that came back last fall ended up earning their diploma, and then several of our transition students opted to take their diploma. So that's why the 2017 graduation rate changed from 94% to 97. So I anticipate that will be close to 98 or higher for our adjusted for 2018.
Can I ask a couple of questions?
Sure.
Make sure, you know, you explain it every year, but...
That's okay.
So the student gets a certificate of special ed students. If they can choose if they have the credits to graduate or not, if they want to continue with the services, right?
So, this is not completely my wheelhouse, but there are some students that will not have the... earning a diploma is not part of their IEP plan. They're more attending RB, and that's the certificate of attendance. And so those students are not considered a graduate of RB. But that is what the IEP team has decided was the best plan for them in their educational program.
But the 13 that met the graduation requirements, but stayed, if they graduate, they can't stay, right?
They...
They could choose to do one.
Correct, so they participated in the ceremony. They did not take their diploma physically. We recognize them as being students that attended RB, and then it's, when they decide to actually take their diploma, then that's when they exit from RB, and then they're considered a graduate.
I see, and they could stay till their day before their 22nd birthday, right?
So this is one of the largest transition groups that we've had since I can remember, and I don't know if just more and more families are choosing for their students to stay on for transition, but to have 13 students in one class, that was pretty large.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions on graduation?
I just was actually looking at the Illinois State Report Card. So now they start to report out on five, six, and seven years. So we actually are getting, on that document, we get credit for these kids who stay till...
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, we do. And sometimes the students will just stay on for one year. They just need an additional year of transition, and some of our students, depending on their needs, stay on until the day before their 22nd birthday. It's really a student and family decision.
Beth, on page two of your report, on 48 for the Board, your projection for class of 19?
Yes, 94.6, and that's taking into account some students that we've already lost through a GED program and students that have dropped. We have found that students that drop early, sometimes in their sophomore or junior year, come back to us. They realize that it's tough out there to find a job, or the GED route is not for them. So they will come back, and we re-enroll them, and we do the best we can to get them caught up, get them to graduate on time or during the summer. So I'm always hopeful that we'll get a few of those students back. And then it's really just a matter of maintaining those seniors that we have right now, those students that are credit deficient, that they're in a credit recovery program, that they're working with counselors, that they're meeting, you know, with teachers, that are really staying on top of those students to ensure that they're getting all the support that they need to try and graduate on time. And again, if you look at students with transition services, they've already planned out that they will probably return to RB for a fifth or a sixth year to receive transition services. Looking at five students that right now are credit deficient, we hope they work really hard to try and meet that May graduation date, but that's just, the 94.6 is what I'm projecting, and then that's closely monitored throughout the year through the counselors and I meeting and what we call small teams, keeping track of credits, looking at students' attendance, seeing what additional supports we need to ensure that those students are gonna get through. And then I did wanna address Mr. Walsh's question about social work services. So we were fortunate enough to add a .6 social worker this year. So we have an additional person here three days a week. And I think having that additional support really allows us to provide more tier-one support to our students. Our special education students certainly have mandated minutes that our social workers have to provide. We certainly have students in crisis that those needs have to be met first. But having an additional social worker in the building really helps us plan those preventive programs. Preventative programs, for example, this week is National Suicide Prevention Week, and the social workers, along with the school psychs, have put together a week-long worth of activities that are really opening students' eyes up to depression and anxiety and where to go for help, and not just for themselves, but if they have concerns about their peers, that they know who to reach out to. So all of those preventative measures, I think, rather than being, you know, reactive, are where we need to put as much of our focus and our resources as we possibly can. And I can just say, I mean, this is my 15th year at RB, and I can say with 100% certainty that the increase of hospitalizations, the increase of students with depression, anxiety, school refusal, it's coming at us fast. And, you know, we are doing the best that we can to support the students and parents because they look to the school to give them the help and the support that they need. So that's what, having that additional social worker now, granted, it's one person, three days a week, but I feel like we can already see a difference. There's already that planning that's gone on for some of these preventative programs. So I'm excited to see what the year is gonna bring.
Beth, were there any questions submitted on the other supports? Are there any specific things you wanna highlight for the Board that you're trying to, you're implementing this year?
I answered Mr. Walsh's question, yes.
Is there anything else you wanna highlight?
No, I just think that we really do a great job monitoring these students, progress monitoring their, not only their credits, but their attendance grades, and just really keeping a close eye on these students that need the most support.
Your next one is the matriculation rate.
Just wanted to ask a question.
Oh, go ahead.
It really wasn't a faulty report, but since you've brought it up a bunch of times. So the students who had enough, were special ed, with enough credits to graduate, but come back. You said we offer them transition services. Do they take course classes too, or what transition services do we have?
Sure.
Did you answer that? Again, it fits another night to answer.
No, it's, transition services are not necessarily courses. That's where they work with the career program, the job program, teaching social skills, life skills, you know, so that they can be successful contributors to society and move on, you know, and be able to maybe live on their own and hold down a job.
So since we have a much bigger group, what area of our staff handles the transition services? And do we have the right staff now? You said this is the most we ever had.
Alright, we have two full-time transitions specialists. There are certified transition specialists, and then we also have a special ed teacher that assists with the two transitional services, and I believe there's also an eight or two that work with them.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so moving on to matriculation. So this is where students are self-reporting through their transcript requests, their final transcript requests. We had 97.1% of our students indicating that they were moving on to a two-year, four-year technical trade school or prep school, or military, and then a small percentage of our students going on to seek employment. I think this is something that we just continue to try to get better at in helping to push students earlier on for that post-secondary planning. And it's tough, because it's not just the student. It's such a family decision and what that looks like. And so providing parent events, trying to get parents to attend those so that they're starting early. And that's something that we're gonna, as a department, continue to revamp and see if we should be doing more freshman year, reaching out to other schools and seeing if they have some speakers that they could recommend that will be motivating to students and then also help parents in their planning and their decision-making. I wanted to ask, answer, Mr. Walsh had a question about DVR.
I couldn't remember what it was.
So DVR is Displanes Valley Region, and we have a partnership with them. We are one of six high schools, along with Triton, and their primary focus is to look for partnering with, I guess, out in the community to find careers and programs of study for high school students and for college students. So every year, they have sort of a new idea, a new plan, and this year, they are doing field trips with each high school to Triton. And I highlighted the four programs that they are highlighting this year. Auto, computer science, manufacturing, and health sciences. So on September 18th, we're hopeful to have a busload of students, seniors. Some of them undecided, some of them who actually are interested in this particular career. And they'll go over to Triton and visit the individual program here from the teachers at Triton. And so that's organized through DVR, which some of the planning is on our part, but it's just a nice partnership to have with them because they'll reach out to the community and try to do some of these organized events to expose students to what's out there. And hopefully, that's just, you know, that's a partnership that just continues to grow and get better.
Were there questions submitted, Beth, on the matriculation?
I answered.
That's correct. Go ahead.
Can I ask the same question I asked you at the football game last week?
Yes.
Are we able to, or do we track what the success rate of our students that enter college, whether they graduate or not?
Yeah, that does show up on ultimately the report card. But what it doesn't show is the student that takes six years or the student that takes seven years to get a degree. I think they just track them after four years.
And how is it tracked?
Through their Illinois number.
Okay.
Yeah. So again, what I find promising though, and I said this today in our Leadership Council meeting, is that students feel that moving on to a two-year school or a trade school, like that is what's seen as the norm here. You know, that they see themselves going on and doing something post-secondary. And while work is certainly a start, I think they quickly learn that there needs to be some skill building. There needs to be a path other than just, I'm gonna go out and get a job. And so that's one of the things that Kylie Linquist and I are gonna be working on with the Career Academy or the Career Committee. And we're hopeful to do some career spotlights this year, looking at student interest and targeting those students that really, you know, don't know what they're going to do. We have so many students that know they're gonna go on to a four-year college, and they'll probably figure out a major somewhere along the way. But it's those students that really just, they don't know what their passion is. They haven't tapped into an interest to expose them to some unique careers or something that might get them energized. And then I'm also hopeful to send out probably like a Google form to our parents because I think we have so many resources right here in our own building. Parents that would be willing to speak at a career spotlight or participate in a college fair, or someone from their company, or they're an entrepreneur, they've started their own company, to really start building a database of where we can reach out to people and say, you know, we have this student that has expressed an interest in this. Can you help us or have a conversation? Because sometimes just having a conversation with another adult is enough to spark a student to get excited about it. So that's something that's also in the works for this year.
Thank you.
Thanks, Beth.
Thank you.
Attendance and engagement, right, Kristen?
So our next two staff members are Assistant Principal of Student Affairs, Mr. Dave Mannen, and Assistant Principal for Athletics, Mr. Brennan Curtin. And they're here to talk about student engagement from last year as well as attendance. And then each of them also have a report from either summer camp or summer school as well to share with you.
Thank you, Kristen, good evening, Board. Today, we're gonna present my portion. First to go would be the average daily attendance for the 17-18 school year. Looking at the chart there, we put, going back to 2014, our overall average daily attendance, and this year, we came out at 94.5%, which is staying consistent. It's a little bit higher than last year at 94.2, and similar to 94.3 in '16. Came on board in '16, and we saw a percent increase there at that point. We've held pretty consistently throughout. We've had a couple of things that have gone against our average daily attendance, like the Cubs rally and the cold weather last year. So we're on a really good track until that happened. So, you know, it's credited to our deans and what we're doing right now. Really getting out and pounding the pavement and getting our students into the building. But 94.5, we're pretty excited about that. We're gonna continue to utilize our check-in and check-out procedures through HERO. The dean's office completed 53 home visits throughout the year in association with our school liaison officer now, so that's an added resource that we're utilizing as well. We do weekly attendance meetings with our Continental School Improvement Team, and then increased attendance awareness through quarterly transfer meetings that we've held with our students that come in from outside of our feeder programs. We saw that that was a very successful thing, and one impact area for our daily attendance is our transfer students, students that haven't been in the feeder programs. So we increase our, I guess, our one-on-one time with those students, offering them opportunities and seeing what their needs are, and getting them into the class and into the building. Plan to improve the attendance rate this year. We're really doing an upfront push. We've created a website link, Attendance Matters link, and we're utilizing our two full-time psychologists now, and we're doing a bi-weekly meeting. We're really getting out front, we're looking at early attendance data from our students, and then we're gonna do a one-to-one push utilizing not only our psychologists, but then also our interns from the Student Services Office. So we're gonna do daily check-ins with our students. This is something new that we're doing this year, and we're also gonna be putting students through, if they have chronic truancy, as we see through that data, we're gonna put them through some lunch meetings where psychologists are utilizing a curriculum, attendance curriculum to better their attendance and more, like better inform our students about how we can get them here and what, how can we serve you. So we're pretty excited about this program, getting this up and running right now. You've probably seen some posters throughout the building regarding attendance and Attendance Matters. And so we're excited to get this up and running, and we'll see how this goes this year. We're gonna continue the perks program, which is a point-based system that our psychologists put together last year for our at-risk students defined by their attendance and grade. So that'll get going after the quarter, our report cards come out. And then continued collaboration with our school improvement team, and we just talked about the lunch meetings that we're gonna start this year as well. So we're excited about where we're at with our attendance. We're continuing to be innovative and come up with new things and utilize the resources that are available to us. So I want to thank you for increasing our social work staff, our psychologists, and we're leaning on them this year to help us out in our Student Affairs Office. Questions on attendance?
Engagement?
Okay, this report I love.
Hold on, one second.
Yeah.
Is that your headphones that Mr. Prox is speaking into?
Sorry?
Are those your headphones, Mr. Prox is speaking into? Is there a way to turn those down, maybe? Thank you.
This is, the next report here that we're gonna give out is our engagement report, which includes extracurricular activity participation in either activities or sports. This is always an exciting one to look at at the end of the year because throughout the year, we're always offering up students opportunities, and they're presenting those to us. And so throughout the year, if students have ideas, we're open to that. And if they, you know, we have a sponsor, we can get active participation, we're gonna run with it. And so it's really cool at the end of the year to see where that falls. Our district goal in our percentage is 70%. Looking at where we're at with 2016, we're at 63. We bumped up to 69% this year, so we're almost to our district goal, which we're really excited about. Based on the chart below our attendance percentage, we broke out who's involved in what. And so we did that by grade level. And so you see, our kids are involved, not only in just one, but several activities or several sports. So this chart that you see is an extracurricular activity that includes a sport or a club. So that's a combined effort there. Because we know that our students may be in Model U on, but they may also be on badminton or volleyball team or football teams, and so on and so forth. So that chart there breaks that out for you. Students involved in one activity is 495 total at all grade levels. Two is 346, and three activities is 274. It's always difficult, as the seasons get long and kids are more involved, to get them involved in more than three. But we're pretty excited with 274 there. The chart that's below that, we broke that down, we did a little historical trend there, from '15, '16 to '17, '18, and this is where we... And this is where we really see our percentages increase. Our seniors, we're really excited about that, from 55 to 66 percent that are involved in something. And so that's a big win. We usually see our upper leveled students typically tail off there. So if we can keep them in the building and lean on them for their leadership, that's something that we're really happy about. We did see a little bit of a decline there in our junior class at from 68 to 63. Our sophomores picked it up at 72 percent, overall 72 percent involved in something. And then our freshmen are always significantly high, but this year a little bit more, and they were involved, 77 percent of the freshman class last year was involved in something, whether it was an activity or a sport. So overall, that brings our number to 1,115 students that are involved in something out of the 1,610 that we have in the student body. And that brought our percentage to 69 percent. So I want to thank the board and all of our staff for really jumping in and getting involved. Some of our staff go unpaid, and they offer themselves up as volunteers. And so we started several of those clubs, and we can't do that without staff support and their time, so.
I have a question.
Yeah.
I have to ask about hockey, but then I have another question. Do you include the kids who play hockey?
We did this year, yes.
You did?
Uh-huh.
That's exciting.
Yes.
Thank you.
How do you think we got to 66 percent?
I know, it's those kids. And do you ever look at cohort data? So like the juniors in 16-17 were 68 percent, but when they're seniors, they're 66 percent. So do you ever track it that way, where you look to see, you know, so like as sophomores, they were 70 percent, and then juniors, they were 68 percent, and then seniors, they're 66 percent? Do you ever look at the data that way to see if?
Yeah, it's a different way to look at it. I think I always, in the back of my mind is, you know, our upperclassmen significantly are down always. And so we try to track where our seniors are at overall engagement-wise and so forth. But looking at the cohort historically is something that we can take a look at going forward here.
Okay, I was just wondering, because when you look at it that way, some of them, the percentages go down. When you look at the same group of kids. But, okay, thanks.
Is it three, one column is three or more, Dave?
Yes.
So part of it, though, as Wes pointed out, which isn't a bad thing, we also are doing a better job of tracking activities.
Yes.
People are in, right? Because we, at one time, we didn't count the kids that were supporting the play. But we do now.
We do.
Because there's a bunch of them doing that.
We're also utilizing, we're formalizing some of those clubs that maybe were informal previously.
Okay.
You know, so like our book club, that's gonna be formalized here. And that was students that met that are here after school.
Right.
But we're never tracked.
Okay.
And so we're doing a better job of making sure that those get formalized, and we have a sponsor, we bring those out.
We have a new play director that's done a really good job. I think the musical she double-casted, correct?
And our new fall director as well. So Allison Wonderland had 70 students try out for the fall play this year. And so she kept 50 and double-casted many of the roles.
Wow.
Mm-hmm.
The staff's done a really good job with this, no doubt.
Okay. Good evening, Board. I'd like to touch on some of the athletic participation numbers. We have had 748 students participate in a sport. Of the 748 students that did participate in a sport, 486 students participated in one sport, 237 students participated in two sports, and 25 students were three-sport athletes. Like to touch on some of our efforts to drive athletic participation. We have continued to improve our community engagement with future Bulldogs. We've expanded youth appreciation recognition nights. Our athletic programs have hosted youth clinics more times throughout the year. For example, soccer, cheerleading, softball, to name a few. We've had continued extended training and coaching clinics for our youth programs and their coaching staff. For example, basketball, softball, football, excuse me. Regarding the youth appreciation nights and the contests where we hold those, it should be noted that it is on this night only that youth student athletes are offered complimentary admission to the contest, not every home contest. We feel by recognizing our youth student athletes on these nights, these potential future Bulldogs are exposed to our athletic programs and get an inside look at our programs. And this event serves as a marketing opportunity to showcase our programs to both student athletes and their families. On a separate note, all athletic programs continue to be nominated for the IHSA Team Academic Achievement Award, which promotes athletes to maintain a team grade point average of over 3.0. This recognition has served as a badge of honor amongst our coaches and their programs, and is often referenced when conducting those youth appreciation nights, sharing that information with our future Bulldog student athletes and their families. And again, you know, coaches do take pride in that and stressing the fact that the better our student athletes perform in the classroom, the more opportunities they'll have when they leave Riverside Brookfield. The athletic department continues to increase the competitiveness for our lower-level programs, freshman, sophomore, JV levels, and many sports by expanding their schedules of contests, thereby creating more opportunities for our lower-level athletes. For example, we've expanded our boys' Christmas basketball tournament to include freshman A, B, and sophomores. We now have a JV level for boys' and girls' soccer, boys' and girls' water polo. We have JV invites for that, as well as a JV badminton invite. So again, a lot of opportunity for some of our lower-level athletes. Moving on, the athletic department continues to increase, you know, marketing our programs to potential Riverside Brookfield students by working with the wellness department. I should say, you know, each member of the staff of the wellness department has been instructed to share the many opportunities that we have within our athletic program. And I think all fall sports continue to keep their doors open well into the school year. Obviously, there's a cutoff date, but there's still some untapped student athletes that are sometimes on the fence. So sometimes when they get that nudge from their wellness teacher, it can make the difference in driving those numbers up and identifying potential team members. Any questions on athletic participation? Okay, I'll kick it back to Dave.
Hey, Brendan, real quick on the, you talked about the lower levels and increasing participation in the As and Bs. So as we continue our engagement, we're gonna have to, one of the new jobs you're gonna have to look into as the athletic director, and I know Kristen's talked about this a little bit, is we still need to continue to investigate conference opportunities. I know with several of the schools in our conference being private schools don't offer these lower levels. So there's some times where we're playing three different opponents on one weekend because the other schools only have a varsity team, no lower levels or... And I had one board member tell me that, you know, the 60-mile commute to Friday night's football game was a little extreme.
Sure.
So I know you're only like 60 days on the job.
Right.
But Tom and John, when they were here for the last three years, and the board's asked about that a little bit, is possibly looking to find us, see if there's any conference opportunities out there for us.
Sure. I think, you know, as I mentioned before, I think it's important to explore all opportunities and be open-minded and open to any opportunities to explore different conferences. And, you know, I can explain firsthand in scheduling, you schedule a freshman and a sophomore contest, more often than not, it's gonna be a different opponent for that freshman team. Because so many sports are combining like frosh-soph games, and that's not who Riverside Brookfield is. We're still at a place where we can have a freshman team, B-team as well, and then a sophomore team. So that starts to become a little bit of a challenge when we're scheduling conference contests in virtually every sport. So I think it's important that we do continue to explore different options.
So then additionally, they both each have a report in regards to summer school will be first, and then summer camps. So summer school is on page 57 of Board Book.
So the summer school revenue and expenses chart that you are looking at now is something that we hand out each year to track where we're at overall with students and course fees, revenue, expenses, and then just overall operating expenses for summer school. Overseeing summer school for this year and the previous year, our numbers are pretty consistent. We had, we ran nine credited courses, six non-credited courses. We brought health back again. We saw a total of 316 students involved in either a non-credited course or workshop and/or accredited course. The overall operating budget there, we received a little over $13,000 in title money, so that offset some of the expenses. And so we ended up with a neutral balance there at the end of the day. So there was no cost to the district in running summer school again for this year.
Okay, Brendan?
Okay. Athletic summer camps. Excited to share that we experienced an increase in summer camp participation of approximately 12 percent. We had nearly 1,000 summer campers. Some of the programs that saw the biggest increases. Badminton saw an increase of 21 campers. Boys' and girls' volleyball, an increase of 21 campers as well. Boys' and girls' soccer, an increase of 28 campers. And wrestling increased 16 campers. All camps ran cost-neutral. Moving forward and planning summer athletic camps for 2019, it is the athletic department's goal to share these summer camp dates and times with the community in early February. By doing so, it is our hope that we'll secure more campers by releasing our summer camp dates and times sooner than our neighboring high schools.
Any questions for these two gentlemen? Thank you guys. Great job, Dave.
We've done good work.
We got the, we got a background here, our list again, police department radio equipment.
No update.
Chance for visitor statement. Seeing that there's no visitors, we'll move on to additional discussion items. Anyone have any additional discussion items they want to bring up? Look to my left, look to my right. Nope. All right, consent agenda, action items. Approve both minutes.
Resolve the Board Education Township High School District 2-A, Cook County, Illinois, hereby takes a thawing action on the listed consent agenda items. Approves minutes from the meetings held on August 14, 2018, open and closed, as presented and amended in the September 11, 2018 Board Agenda Packet.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, go for the vote.
Ms. Reska?
Yes.
Dr. King?
Yes.
Ms. Sierra?
Yes.
Mr. Smithing?
Yes.
Ms. Towner?
Yes.
Mr. Welsh?
Yes.
Ms. Rich.
Yes. All right, old business, action items, life safety items, capital improvements.
No updates. Trolls continuing to finalize the work on individual projects with subcontractors throughout the building. Will be able to update the board's facility committee on the work that was completed this summer and sometime this fall. Pretty much wrapping up the electric and the, some of the plumbing issues, but next summer will be the air handling unit on the pool. Otherwise, we're all good.
All right. Adopt the budget for fiscal 2019.
Where is the Board Education Township High School District 2-A, Cook County, Illinois? Cook County, State of Illinois, caused to be prepared a tentative form of budget, and the secretary of this board has made the same conveniently available to the public for inspection for at least 30 days prior to final action thereon. Whereas the public hearing was held, as to such budget on the 11th day of September 2018, notice of said hearing was given at least 30 days prior thereto as required by law, and all other legal requirements have been complied with. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board Education of said district as follows. Section 1, that the fiscal year of this school district be, and the same hereby is fixed and declared to be the beginning, to be beginning July 1, 2018 and ending June 30, 2019. Section 2, that the following budget containing an estimate of amounts available in each fund separately and of expenditures from each be, and the same is hereby adopted as the budget of this school district for said fiscal year.
Second.
Any additional discussion? Looking to my left, looking to my right. Go for the vote.
Dr. King?
Yes.
Ms. Sierra?
Yes.
Mr. Smithing?
Yes.
Ms. Towner?
Yes.
Mr. Welsh?
Yes.
Ms. Reska?
Yes.
Mr. Rich.
Yes. All right, new business.
Payment of bills. The next one.
All right.
We had some questions submitted. Scott?
Board Book Page 76, a rego for the Suresco pool unit repair. There were circuits that kept tripping on the unit. A rego mechanical had to replace a bad thermostatic expansion valve. They had to pressure check the unit after they put in the valve. And then, as Dr. Skinkis said, the unit is scheduled to be replaced in the summer of 2019.
We aren't gonna have to spend $10,000 or $20,000 more dollars this year to make it last till it gets ready.
We're hoping that we can nurse it along. There's no guarantee on it that unit does run 24/7.
How old is that unit?
Not very old. Ten.
Ten years.
What's the typical life on those?
We did talk, we did talk with our engineer that's gonna handle that project for us next summer, and he said 10 to 15 years is about right because there's no break. Your air conditioning handling units, if they stop in the winter, you know, their boilers only, you know, could go to one or two boilers. You could scale your boilers back in the summer for just heating your water. That pool has to run 24/7 through 65 because of the chlorine. So he said it is traditional, and then the fact that, you know, we have, the repairs we've added over, let my tenure here, have prolonged its life. But when I first got it, if you remember, we were restructuring the engine, trying to make it stronger. We redid the fan, motor. So the thought was to try to get through this year and do it next summer because we would have to close the pool for about a month.
By the way, are we gonna notify the people who use the pool in the summer, planning early that we'll be closed down?
We've talked with our water polo and swim coaches and our aquatics director, so we're shooting for the last week of July and the first three weeks of, first two to three weeks of August before school starts. Because we will have to drain, if not all the pool, a portion of, a significant portion of school is scaffold up over the pool.
Is there any pool repair items that are gonna be addressed at that point, if there's any issues with the pool?
Well, we'll do another inspection. We drained the entire pool, or three-quarters of the pool.
Three-quarters of it this summer.
This summer. Scrub tile, did some things. So, well, we have no immediate concerns that we're aware of.
So would that impact the girls' summer, I mean, the girls' swim team? Because don't they start?
We think we should be.
Mid-August?
The goal is to try to get it by the first day of their camp.
Okay.
All right, other questions?
Yes, Board Book Page 77. Clarity in numbers for $2,200. Per our district auditor, we needed a full actuarial report per GASB 75 requirements. That's our Government Accounting Standards Board. This report that they did was for other post-employee benefits other than pensions.
Isn't it a tiny account?
It is a small, you know-
I mean, how much is the, isn't the amount of, isn't it only like $10,000 or $50,000 or something in there?
It's about somewhere between $350 and $400, what the report said.
Plus $2,000.
So it'll be part of the audit report.
All right.
Board Book Page 80, Grand Prairie Transit for $23,000. This was our special education transportation cost for the month of August.
One thing Scott and I talked about today going through these questions is under the description, we're gonna do, change it up a little bit, so whenever you see Grand Prairie, we'll make sure we put-
It says-
SPDD transportation. And then when it's under first student, we could put FT slash athletic, so you know that's for field trip and athletic transportation.
That's a good idea. Just now that you explained it, I only asked that question recently before.
It should be clear. Board Book Page 83, Telcom Innovations Group for $20,000. This was service and support for the internal phone equipment for the next three years. It was budgeted in our FY '19 budget. There was approximately $7,000 savings for doing the three-year contract. Board Book Page 84, Rob Winski, Football Camp Injury Prevention. The football team hired the outside vendor to come in and talk with our students about, obviously, injury preventions. This was used with some of the summer camp money on that, just to make sure that we're well-educated on how to prevent injuries and not get any further injuries.
That wasn't what the question was. The question is, I asked the same question. We paid a bunch of volleyball coaches to, out of the impressed, did they go through the background check?
The, yes, all summer camp workers or volunteers or camp coaches. We did pay some through impressed on that. With it, they will be getting 1099s later on in the year. Everyone went through a background check that got paid.
Then my second question is, why don't they have- Then my second question is, why don't they have to be brought to the Board to be approved if they're employees?
I treat them, I treat them more as a paid service versus.
You give them the 1099, aren't you?
As a.
Well, we give 1099s to officials.
Officials.
Do we?
Yes. So we don't, we don't bring officials to the Board. But what we tend to bring to the Board is any volunteer that's going to do a season, any volunteer that's doing a stipend or a club throughout the year. But some of these summer camp kids are like seniors that graduated. So they'll come back for a week and work the kids camp before they go to college. So we make them have a background check on file.
I think you should check. The statute says the Board has to approve hiring and firing of any employee. I don't think you can use your judgment to determine what the length of the services and say because of that person, it's not an employee of the district. I think every employee, even if it's only for a week, has to be approved. I think you should check.
We could check on that. Because that would run, that could run, they could be done with their services for four weeks before the Board approved them. But that's okay.
We'll check.
Right.
Okay, Board Book Page 85, under Winning Streak, Football Gear, Purchased Coaching Apparel for the Coaching Staff for Football. They all got a polo, a hat, and a pullover. This was for about 12 to 15 coaches, including volunteers. This purchase aligns with historical purchases over the last four years. Okay, moving on to the checklist-ing, under Board Book Page 89, for Printers. These were replacement printers for out-of-date units. They were too costly to repair or fix. Models and locations vary throughout the building. This is separate from our copier agreement that we have.
How do we decide which ones are in the copier agreement and which ones we just replace?
The copiers are separate. That's like a completely different thing. This, the printer replacements all based on our tech director.
The copiers are all printers nowadays. So you, a copier's a printer. So we have a big maintenance agreement for all these copies and printers. Who decides if we're replacing all these little printers? I mean, this was like $1,200 worth of printers. Does Mike have to approve them all and Kristen or somebody?
Mike is the one that goes and does the inventory on all the printers that are in the classrooms or the labs. Those are all separate compared to our Canon copier.
I think the main thing he wants to make sure of is all this runs through IT.
It runs through IT.
So it's not any department saying, oh, I want a new printer, correct? It's all run through.
It's all approved through.
I worked for a $19 billion company and they made us get rid of all the printers because they got bigger copiers and said you can walk to the corner of the building to get it. Now, that might not work in a school. Maybe you need a printer in every room. I don't know. But I do think we got to make sure we're testing that before we just, you know, it doesn't work anymore, get a new one. I just hope we're doing that.
Yeah, we also certainly don't have printers in every room.
I assume not.
But sometimes we have them in department offices. So when a copier breaks, that they can still print and then take that to another copier that is in a different area of the building. So that's why we have printers.
So they go through the process.
It's just not cost effective at $150 an hour and some of this stuff to come out here. You know, talking with Mike Connors. So that's why he replaces them versus trying to repair them.
Oh, I'm not questioning that they're not worth having a maintenance person repair them. I'm questioning whether we each time decide, do we really need to replace this one? It's worn out, throw it out.
Consolidate.
Consolidate. That's all.
Given that, given they're all network printers, right?
Yeah.
The big ones we got are network printers. So all of a sudden, there's like, well, maybe you don't need that. Why?
Right. We did read a lot out about four or five years ago.
That's right, you did.
Because there was one in every classroom.
Right. And then, phase two.
Is there any other one, Scott?
Yes. Same page, Board Book 89, James Baum, The Halftime Show Creation. This is an additional pay outside of his stipend for hours spent over the summer choreographing the halftime show. This started a few years ago and it saves the district money by not having to hire an outside choreographer for the halftime show.
For what halftime show?
For the football game. So we paying the stipend to do it and we paying extra to prepare for it.
In the past, they were paying a choreographer to come in over the summer to prepare the routine. And then they, so we able to eliminate the payment of the choreographer and said we'll pay you some summer hours to choreograph the routine.
Thank you. You answered all the other ones.
The other ones were answered.
The coaching question.
Okay. Ready for approval?
Any additional questions? No? Okay. Did we read the?
Marianne, do we have, did somebody already read the resolution?
Resolve the Board Education Township High School District 208 Cook County Illinois hereby approves the payment of bills as presented listed in the September 11, 2018 Board Agenda Packet.
Second. Vote.
Ms. Sierra?
Yes.
Mr. Smithing?
Yes.
Ms. Towner?
Yes.
Dr. Welsh?
Yes.
Ms. Reska?
Yes.
Dr. King?
Yes.
Ms. Rich.
Yes. Move on to approval of Title I District Plan.
So the Board approved the Title I District Plan last year. We wrote it on the agenda again just to make sure we have it on a public board meeting agenda. There have been no plans, no changes to the plan. And the state says as long as we're not doing any changes, they're okay with our current plan. And we covered that last year. So I just put it there as an informational item to make sure we're compliant.
Resolve the Board Education Township High School District 208 Cook County Illinois hereby approves the district.
Do we have to approve it though? I mean.
I would just.
We don't see the plan again though.
It's the same plan, yeah.
The Title I Plan is presented in the September 11, 2018 Board Agenda Packet.
Second. Any questions, discussion? Go for the vote.
Mr. Smithing?
Yes.
Ms. Towner?
Yes.
Mr. Welsh?
Yes.
Ms. Reska?
Yes.
Dr. King?
Yes.
Ms. Sierra?
Yes.
Mr. Smithing?
Yes.
Ms. Rich.
Yes. Educational tour requests.
Kristen handles all the educational tours that come through staff and there were some questions submitted. So I'll let Kristen explain, answer the questions.
So the forms were slightly reformatted to streamline the process for the Board as well as the staff. There were some questions submitted about food. The requests do outline if students are responsible or if that is included, but we can certainly pull that out so it's more explicit and we can revise them for the second read. And we can provide an estimate of what the food cost would be should students be purchasing the food on their own. Of the five tours, four of them have occurred for the past several years. The new tour this year is the wrestling trip. Last year, the team participated in the Pontiac Tournament and they had a very late night on Friday and then they came all the way back. And then they had a really early morning on Saturday. And so this provides them additional time to sleep and to prepare for their match on Saturday. There was a question about the pre-way-in meals for them. Typically wrestlers don't eat before their match, but the plan for that trip is to get a lot of groceries from Costco and students will primarily be eating that on Friday and Saturday. So there is food available should they want to eat it before the wrestling match.
I just overall make the same kind of as last year. It's like, here's the total cost. Here's, don't, take it out of the activity fund or whatever. Here's what the students are going to pay, including like an estimate of the food. So that it's just logical here, you know, instead of each one, it's a little bit of a jigsaw puzzle trying to figure out what, you know, you're actually presenting.
Yeah. So many of them had a chart to streamline that and we can certainly add food to that chart so that that's upfront and you can provide an estimate.
The other thing I would suggest we consider, see if Gary and others agree, is, you know, a few years ago, we went to the effort to say, like for the summer, for the different, for renting and for the summer, that we allocate cost of the building and, you know, maybe train or whatever. When we see these, some people take minibus and some don't on these field trips. So the minibus costs money too. And it makes it seem like it's free. You know, I think we should consider coming up with some rate for the minibus, whether you do it by miles or days or there's several different ways you could do it to say, okay, you know, if it's 50 cents a mile and they're going to travel 200 miles, it's $100 for the minibus or whatever. So that, you know, people realize there is additional cost to this. And I'm not even saying, in this instance, we should say the students have to reimburse the school because part of the idea of the minibus is they'd be available and save other busing that you have to pay out of pocket. And, I mean, except for the gas that is shared by everybody. But, you know, I think, again, as you get into where you're definitely spending, people have to realize there's costs for these things. Still, it's not a free pass. So I don't know how other people feel about that, but it seems like we should make sure we're addressing all the costs.
Yeah, they do pay for the cost of gas for the trip. My hesitation for that would only be that, you know, we don't price that cost out when the softball team takes that to go to all of their games as opposed to getting a yellow bus because that's the purpose of the bus. Or when AST takes it every week to go to the British home. And so I would just, I would be really cautious about giving those additional costs to the students because most of the time they're already paying, not only for the educational tour, but they're paying to participate in that activity too. And so I would just be cautious since we're leasing them to put that cost under the students too. That would be my recommendation. There were also two other questions that you submitted, or one, sorry. The other one was on the Illinois Theater Fest. So three chaperones is not necessary. Two would be necessary, but three is preferred because there are so many different workshops occurring at the same time in different places on campus that it's helpful to have three chaperones to make sure that all the students are supervised. That's why they prefer.
So they didn't notice only eight students? They're going to be all spread out all over the place?
Yes. Yeah. And it's on a college campus.
And does chaperones have to pay their own cost anyway?
No, chaperones are included in the cost for students.
I don't think, I don't think it doesn't show that.
The registration fee, like for example, for the Illinois Theater Fest, we pay for the registration fee for the chaperones.
What about the rooms? If you look at the rooms, they're all shown by how many students rooms there are.
Yeah, the rooms I believe they paid for, but I think the registration cost is included in that.
Okay, I meant, they have to pay for their own room and food, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So.
I didn't, I didn't look at the dates or the day of the week these are on. Are these typically weekend?
Yes, typically. Sometimes they miss like a half a day of Model UN. I believe they miss a half a school day for that, but most of the time.
So the individual taking them? And is, would we have to put a substitute up there?
For that, yes.
So, in approving these, we're also proving the fact that we're going to pay substitution, substitute cost, right?
Correct, yeah.
Which is an identified in here.
No, because that's not a cost per.
Right, no, not for the student, not for the, but by approving this, just.
So it's another cost for, I'd like to say, I do agree with Tim for these events because these are a one-time event. It's not a regular program. There is a federal amount per mile. So I think it's about 52 cents a mile. It includes the gas and the wear and tear on the minibus. The minibuses are for everyday use, but when we take them on these little trips, we're using them up at a greater rate than our everyday use for going to the softball field or whatever. So I think that should be taken into account for these unique trips.
We could look at it. Something we could keep track some data on and see. I mean, Model UN is a school-sponsored club. So that's like, no different from going to an athletic contest, the Model UN Conference. Those are where those kids participate in their competition.
And those are their only competitions for the year.
Ski club, I think they rent the bus, correct?
Correct, and they pay for it.
So really, we're talking about the Theater Festival. Because I think wrestling might take a bus as well, correct?
I don't remember the actual one, but, but that, I mean, like last year, they took a minibus, but they just didn't stay overnight because it wasn't board-approved. So that, they were already taking the minibus for that particular trip.
And it's a contest.
Mm-hmm, correct.
Okay. We could keep an eye on that. Does the Board need additional time? So if you want us, what we've tried to do, instead of bringing one a month or over the last few years, we try to bring these all to get you, the ones we know of. And then if something else comes up, we bring it to you. Does the Board feel they want another board meeting to look at these? Because we could wait until the next September meeting to approve. It's at the Board's discretion.
I'll look to my, I think I'm ready to vote, Board. You guys ready to vote? Ready to vote for it? I think we can vote for it. Put a vote up there. So who wants to read the motion?
I'll read the resolution.
Resolution.
Resolve that the Board of Education Township High School District 208 Cook County, Illinois hereby approves the following educational tours. Carthage College Model UN High School Conference, Kenosha, Wisconsin on November 2, 2018. Model UN of the University of Chicago Conference, MU NUC. Hyatt Regency Chicago, February 7 through the 10, 2019. Varsity Wrestling Tournament, Pontiac, Illinois on December 7 and 8, 2018. Wilmot Mountain Ski Resort, Wilmot, Wisconsin on December 21, 2018. Alpine Valley Ski Resort, Elkhorn, Wisconsin on January 21, 2019. Cascade Ski Resort, Portage, Wisconsin on February 18, 2019. Illinois High School Theater Festival, University of Illinois, Urbana-Champaign on January 10, January 10 through 12, 2019, as presented in the September 11, 2018 Board Agenda Packet.
Thank you.
Second.
I just have a question, Gary. You mentioned the ski team where the ski club rents the bus?
Yeah. Like they'll do a first student, the yellow bus.
So what about the insurance on that?
We have an account with first student for field trips and athletic events.
Okay.
So then they just pay the cost of that bus and it's all built into the student fee for that trip.
Okay.
Go for the vote.
Ms. Towner?
Yes.
Ms. Welsh?
Yes.
Ms. Reska?
Yes.
Dr. King?
Yes.
Ms. Sierra?
Yes.
Mr. Smithing?
Yes.
Ms. Rich.
Yes. All right, move on to matters for closed session. Plus, tug-up personnel, student discipline, sale or lease of property, pending or imminent litigation, collective negotiation, and school safety. It's an opportunity for visitors to come up and give statements. Seeing no visitors, we will.
Resolve the Board Education Township High School District 208 Cook County, Illinois enters closed session for the purpose of considering employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the public body or legal counsel for the public body, student discipline, purchase or lease of real property, probable imminent or pending litigation, collective negotiations, and school safety.
Second. Go for the vote.
Welsh? Yes.
Ms. Reska?
Yes.
Dr. King?
Yes.
Ms. Sierra?
Yes.
Mr. Smithing?
Yes.
Ms. Rich.
Yes. All right, move on to matters for closed session. Plus, tug-up personnel, student discipline, sale or lease of property, pending or imminent litigation, collective negotiation,